...their meeting to order this Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty five at seven oh four. Let the call to order, uh, can I have a roll call please?
Mrs. Valla, here. Mr. Pulcher. Mrs. McPhillips. Mrs. Erbuck Barnfield, here. Mrs. Theodore, here. Mr. Verardi.
Here.
Mr. Trupuzio.
Here. We have a formal, please stand for the President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Uh, we'll read the mission statement. The mission of North School District meeting is inspiring the peaceful excellence of the character of the flag. Now to conduct a public hearing regarding North School District meeting. Fiscal year twenty six budget. I'd like to call to order this meeting at seven oh five. Uh, roll call please.
Mrs. Valla, here. Mr. Pulcher. Mrs. McPhillips. Mrs. Erbuck Barnfield, here. Mrs. Theodore, here. Mr. Verardi.
Here.
Mr. Trupuzio.
Here. We have a formal, now to receive comments from the public regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty six, twenty twenty six, North School District budget. By law, requires that a public hearing be held prior to the adoption of the district budget. Public hearing is not a dialogue or question and answer session between the board and the audience. It is a time where the public can present information and express opinions. The board's role is to listen intently to all comments presented by the public and then consider those comments when the board deliberates on the adoption of the budget.
Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, now for Kimmy, who's second?
Um, for the first part, we're gonna go over two different public acts. Public Act one oh two eight ninety-five and Public Act one oh three oh three nine four. Both of those have to do with fund balances. Then we're gonna talk about the adjustments that were made from the tentative budget to the final budget. We'll review the budget summary, which also, um, I put a copy of at all of your seats. And then we'll go over our next steps. So the first public act, Public Act one oh two eight ninety-five, um, it's about that at least during the budget hearing or the, um, levy hearing, we have to disclose our fund balances. But this is something we actually disclose multiple times during the year. Anytime that you have one of the budget summaries in front of you, which we do during the budget and we do during the levy, that top row shows you what our fund balances were at the end of this school year, at June thirtieth. And then the very bottom row shows you where we estimate to be next year. So as the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, our total fund balances were at nine point seven million. If you're looking at operations only, and for this public act, for operations, we're gonna consider education, O and M, transportation, and working cash, we were at seven point five. And we are, um, on a cash basis, and the balances that we have here include all loans. And, um, we didn't have any loans, but if we did, that would include loans and if we had done any transfers. The next public act is, um, it says that if you have, at the end of the year, in your operating funds, and for this public act, the only operating funds we look at are the ed fund, operations and maintenance, and transportation. If at the end of the year, you have two point five times your average expenditures for the previous three years, that we would have to do some type of reduction plan to spend on our fund balances. Um, we do not have two and a half times our average expenditures. If you look at, um, our average expenditures for FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five, we're averaging in those three funds about twelve point nine million. Our cash reserve fund balance at the end of FY twenty-five was about four point five million. And the reason why that is lower than the amount from the previous screen is because this does not include working cash. It doesn't include working cash, because working cash, you never have any expenditures out of. So this only includes the three funds, the ed fund, operating, and transportation. So, um, we don't have to do the spend down, which is always good, so not have to do something extra. And we're right in line with where we should be. So we did not make many adjustments from the tentative budget to the final budget. But the adjustments that we did make had to do with looking at personnel, where we finalized all of the new hires, where they were placed at, looking at contracted staff or contracted, um, personnel, and what their final cost came out to be. We made some slight changes for the grants, once we realized where we were actually gonna spend this year for the grants, or what we had done in, um, July and August. We made some slight changes, and we also do, um, a review of our current expenditures and revenues. So we always look at, um, we were, where we're at, and if we had anything that crazy happened in July and August that was different from the tentative budget to the final budget, we made some slight adjustments. Another place where we would have made adjustments would have been to, um, the taxes. However, that is information that we still really do not have. We did receive a couple weeks ago an estimated EAB, which is a good step, because that means we're close to getting our actual EAB, um, but we do not have the final one yet. And as of last week, I went to a meeting with, um, at West Forty, with the IASB members from our area, and someone from Cook County was there to present. So I was so excited, because I thought I was gonna find out about the tax bills. And before they even started the presentation, they wanted to let us know that they're working diligently every day to get this done, but as of right now, we don't have an estimated due date for the fall taxes, and we do not know if that's gonna impact the spring taxes at all. But they are working diligently to get it done, so it's wonderful, and we're very hopeful we'll know soon. Um, but we still don't know. The thing that is okay, if you look at our previous fund balances, and especially our working cash, we're still okay right now. If the, they don't come in soon, we may have to do loans to ourselves from working cash. The funds, um, we, we would need to do those loans would be transportation and possibly the ed fund. Debt service, we do have our bond payment in December. But if you remember, we had the thing last year with escrow funds from thirty years ago. So we should be okay, um, in debt service. But in the ed fund and transportation, we might have to do a loan. If we didn't have the working cash balance we did, we would maybe have to go off for a tax anticipa- anticipation warrant, or we might have to get an actual loan, which is something we would never wanna do, because then we're paying back interest, and it's wasteful money. So we should be okay, but we're also, since we have been saving and doing well, we've put ourselves in a position where we can be okay right now. But we would love if we knew when the tax bills were gonna come in, that would be very helpful. So, and the next sheet is our actual budget summary, which is very, very similar to what I showed you guys, um, during the tentative. Like I said, there's some slight changes, but nothing really crazy or super impactful. And then after, um, for our next steps, we're gonna have the facilities plan review, once we get that back from WOLD, and once we have a BMG meeting. In November, we'll do the tentative levy. December, we'll do the final levy. We'll continue to monitor the budget, and then now we actually start working on our projections for next year and beyond, and we start planning for next year. So that's also why it's important for us to get our final EAB, because when we get that, we actually get what we're gonna get in tax dollars. We find out, like, last December, when we did the levy, we find out how much we're actually gonna get. Remember, the levy is what we ask for, but the extension is what we actually get. And when we start planning and doing our projections, until we have those solid numbers, the projections and the planning aren't exactly perfect. So that's another reason we're really looking forward to getting that. Anyone have any questions on the budget?
I have a question. So with the delay of the tax, or the payment of taxes, when, when do we start considering the internal transfers and based on our funds, how long are we talking for?
So for the ed fund, at the end of September, we have still about one point, at the end of September, after we do the second September payroll, we'll have about one point four million in there. So that should still be okay for, I would say, October and maybe November. So if we didn't have, um, any tax dollars by the end of November, we would maybe have to do a transfer. For the transportation fund, we will probably have to do a transfer in November. Because we probably have, um, at the end of September, we have about forty-three thousand in that fund, so that'll probably be enough for the bill we'll pay in October. And then in November, we'll have to do, um, a loan, so we could pay that bill.
If, how it works is that the transfer is what's needed, so there could be multiple transfers? Or is you, at one time, if they announce it's not gonna come until December, and then it's not gonna due till Jan, or would you do one transfer to know for those two months are what's needed? Or is it month by month? We plan later, we just make that transfer, so one time based on how much we're gonna need?
I would do one time based on how much we need.
Okay, and then when a transfer does take place, is that something that, it's something you guys just do internally, or is it a board meeting to say that hey, we're gonna make this transfer?
It's a, it's a board resolution. So we'll have, um, a resolution as an action item, it wouldn't even be in consent, and you would approve the resolution to do a loan. And so it's different than, um, the, the transfer that's like in the budget, that's a permanent transfer. So that four hundred thousand that we're gonna transfer from O and M to sixty, that money never goes back. But when we do the resolution for the loan, the way it works is, once the tax dollars come in, we automatically pay back working cash. So you don't have to do a resolution to pay it back, because the way it's written is it automatically pays itself back.
Historically, when, when taxes are due, let's just call it August fifteenth is when, when they're due. Historically, would we get ninety percent of that, you know, and obviously there's lingering, or people are asking, but do we pretty much get the majority of the, the tax bills technically due, or?
I would say we get about seventy-five to eighty percent within that month. From like, if they're due August fifteenth, so from July fifteenth to even September fifteenth, we probably get seventy-five to eighty percent. We actually never usually collect one hundred percent at that time, because of people who don't pay their bill, or people that are appealing it, or other adjustments that are made. But then we do always receive some funds later on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Ford. Do we have any other questions? There is an action item on the agenda later in the calendar.
I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing. Maggie and Lauren, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Public hearing is adjourned. Action, aye. Consider motion to approve the agenda as presented. I have a motion.
Motion.
Menzo Maria, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Recognition of visitors. Thank you. Correspondents, ready?
Yep.
For our students, public attention. For your requests are listed on the agenda, if you want to find the district website, add the official homepage link. I'd like to present the social and emotional standards.
Thank you. We're gonna hear from Dr. Viola and Mr. Pimpy on this presentation. Starting with Dr. Viola.
Okay, so, uh, I wanted to take a little bit of time to discuss the social-emotional learning standards here at Lee. Um, whoop, sorry. Um, we're gonna talk about that, can we go back for one second? So, uh, if you look at this graphic, it talks about skills for learning, empathy, emotion management, process. So those are some of the themes that are taught throughout our second step curriculum, our social-emotional learning curriculum. And we'll dive a little bit deeper into these specific standards. Go to the next slide. Perfect. Uh, so here are the three goals for social-emotional learning standards, uh, according to the Illinois State Organization. So goal one is to develop self-awareness, self-management skills to achieve, uh, school and life success. Goal two is use social awareness and interpersonal skills to establish and maintain positive relationships. Goal three, demonstrate decision-making skills and responsible behavior in personal, school, and community contexts. So when we look at each of those goals, it's important to align our standards and make sure that those are the things that we're actually aligning our structure to. So we have some priority standards that are listed here, and, you know, this is listed by the actual standard number. But there's also a description there, and, uh, also the alignment to our second step lesson, or the units, unit in which it is taught. So for example, you might see, uh, something along the lines of why school is important, and, you know, those are skills for learning, and making sure that there's a purpose, and you have motivation strategies, and you're learning how to focus in school, how to pay attention, how to be a good student. There's also, um, standards that focus on the importance of setting goals, and making sure that if you're setting goals, you're problem-solving, say, okay, if I saw that this was an area that I didn't do well, and how am I gonna set up a plan for success moving forward? So those are all, um, just different examples of things that we teach in different ways through how the grade levels. Obviously, in kindergarten, some of those skills are gonna be, you know, at kindergarten level, you know, age-appropriate. Um, but as the years go on, we want students to really be working on building that skill set. So when we look at goal two, which is social awareness and interpersonal skills, that's when we're looking at, okay, so how are we showing empathy, and how do we have skills for it already? So how do we take turns? How do we be an active listening participant? How do we show respect for our mother? I feel like I'm always saying, you know, being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. You know, those are three things we, you know, constantly try to hit home on here at Lee School. So this is, you know, what does it actually look like? And how do we, you know, teach those skills in a context where students can be able to learn that throughout the school day? Then also, how are we problem-solving? If you see that, uh, you know, there is a problem, how are we thinking of solutions? But also realizing that sometimes, when a problem does come, it can have consequences too. So, and, and how do we pick the best solution in that moment? So goal three, we also have some standards that align to that. So, uh, thinking about how are we making safe choices? We always talk about, you know, the safest way to do things. Um, and that could be something as simple as reinforcing that a slide meant to go down, you have to climb up, okay, because otherwise it wouldn't be called a slide. All right. Uh, but also, you know, thinking of how we're, you know, teaching our students, you know, some of these skills that relate beyond the walls of Lee's school, but also into the community. And that was actually one of the things that we also worked on with the Community IASB Act over those few years, really trying to work with community partners. Because when you think about, you know, some of those, uh, you know, the main three things we talked about, being safe, responsible, and respectful, that all relates to, you know, things that have to do with the larger society. So, or that we, we would want to contribute to the larger society. So, uh, that kinda gives you a little bit of a snapshot into the priority standards, little description, and then also how that aligns to what is actually taught in the classroom and through second steps.
For Giles, for our SCL standards, what we've done is, on the next slide, you may be familiar with, if you've had a child at Giles, these four standards that we assess students on, attendance, behavior, participation, and homework. This year, as you all are aware, we made some changes to our schedule at Giles School. For example, our fifth grade science teacher is also our sixth grade science teacher, five-six. Same thing across the board for ELA, uh, math, and social studies. When teachers assess students on the SCL standards in the past, all the grade-level teachers came together and assessed the students on these four standards. So on the next slide, what I challenged my staff to do is, we reviewed, um, we reviewed all the, the Illinois Social-Emotional Learning Standards, and what we did is, we tied them by grade level. And because at, the advisory is now five days a week at thirty minutes, we wanted to move that more into the academic sector for grading. And so what we did as grade-level teams is we looked at the Illinois Social-Emotional Learning Standards and selected three standards that grade-level teams can assess their students on. So for example, fourth grade, you'll see priority standard number one is one A, two B, which is describing and demonstrating ways to ma- to manage emotions in a socially acceptable manner. Priority standard number two, one C, two A, describe the steps in setting and working toward goal achievement. And priority standard number three, three A, two B, is demonstrating knowledge of how social norms affect decision-making and behavior. So each grade level was able to reflect, and what they did is they, they selected the priority standards, they deconstructed the priority standards, and this is part of our PLC planning, as you see on the slide right there. Um, if you click on that link, it'll open it up and show the work that the grade-level teams created. So the standard is listed, then it's the deconstruction of the standard. Then they selected common formative assessments, along with common summative assessments that tie to each of the three priority standards. Based on those assessments, they then created proficiency scales using our matrix, mastery, behavior, and developing, so that students know that this is the standard that they have to achieve, this is how we go about and achieve it. And then the common formative and summative assessment allows our grade-level teams to discuss in some ways that we can constantly improve and support our students, so that they're meeting the expectations for their grade-level team. So each grade level did that. I won't go into each grade level, but as for sixth grade, they selected one A, three A, which is analyzing factors that create stress or motivate successful performance. They selected one C, three A, set a short-term goal and make a plan for achieving it. And two A, three A, predict others' feelings and perspectives in a variety of situations. Seventh grade went on with one C, three A, set short-term goals and make a plan for achieving it. Two C, three B, demonstrate cooperation and teamwork to promote group effectiveness. And three B, three A, analyze how decision-making skills improve study habits and academic performance. Going on to eighth grade, one C, three A, set a short-term goal and make a plan to achieve it. Two A, three B, analyze how one's behavior may affect others. And three B, three A, analyze how decision-making skills improve study habits and academic perfor- performance. So there really is a lot of work went into creating this, but this now, with it, with our advisory and our new format of thirty minutes, five days a week, this ties the advisory to an academic component for our students. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in my next presentation. Should I go? The next presentation I'm gonna discuss is the Giles School Honor Courts. And I'm gonna give you a little history of our honor court. So since the implementation of standards-based grading in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, North School District Eighty moved away from using grade point averages, GPAs, to determine student achievement. As part of this shift, the traditional valedictorian and salutatorian recognitions were removed from the eighth-grade graduation ceremony. In their place, students are now honored with a series of achievement courts that celebrate their accomplishments in a meaningful and inclusive way. So our current practice that we have is four courts. Gold, which is awarded for mastery and academic achievement. Purple, which was awarded for mastery and SCL achievement. So back to that first presentation, which you don't have to go back to the slides, Mrs. Guzik, but that is where we tied the attendance, the behavior, the participation, and that homework from. Uh, red, which is awarded for membership in the Spanish Honor Society, where those students, they, they study for a, an assessment, and they take the national exam. And if they pass that exam, then they are awarded that Spanish Honor Society. And that's the red court. And then the green is awarded for successful completion of being duly enrolled with North School District Eighty and Ridgewood High School two thirty-four. So last year, we had nine students that participated in the Ridgewood. So they, they went to Ridgewood High School, and they participated in, uh, reading. We had, uh, of those nine, we had, of those nine, two students also participated in the math program at Ridgewood High School as well. Some of the challenges that we've learned through our time, and I'm gonna share some of those concerns that I'm highlighting right here. Families, families question teachers' grading decisions, requesting for grade changes when the student's performance did not meet the established requirements. Families have questioned the criteria for earning the SCL court, specifically the attendance requirement, noting concerns about the impact of excused absences such as illness or other valid reasons. And the final concern that I'm noting is families noted that receiving notification about court eligibility right before graduation adds stress to the event. This timing also places undue stress on staff, who must respond to questions and concerns during an already busy time. So some recommendations I have for you. Uh, outline through the SCL standards taught during advisory, so the standards that I just shared with you that the grade-level teams selected, deconstructed, created the assessments, and then provided, uh, developed the proficiency scales, ensuring alignment with the Illinois Social and Emotional Learning Standard. Families will be notified of their students' projected court eligibility during the first week of May, based on performance up to that point. If any changes occur as a result of student performance later in May, families will be promptly informed to ensure that they have the most up-to-date information before graduation. The SCL standards will now be incorporated into the academic court, the yellow court, which thus eliminating the need for a separate purple court. This change streamlines recognition and ensures that students meeting SCL expectations are acknowledged alongside their academic achievements. And then finally, a letter from the principal will be shared with families, outlining the qualifications for earning honor codes, as well as for earning honor cords, as well as the timeline for the review process. This communication ensures that families have a clear understanding of the criteria and important dates related to court eligibility. So, the recommended plan moving forward is to remove that purple court. Have the gold court, which is awarded for mastery in all academic achievements, including SCL, which includes advisory. The red court would be awarded for membership in the Spanish Honor Society. And green would be awarded for successfully completing dual enrollment within the Norwood School District Eighty curriculum and the Ridgewood High School District Two Thirty Four curriculum. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
So, for the gold courts, we talked about awarded for mastery. So, mastery is when it's all green and yellow?
Correct. So, mastery across the board for every subject that that student is in, those classes. It's green across the board for all of those standards. And with the recommendation, it would include advisory, the SCL components.
So, even the slightest bit of yellow, let's say it's ninety-five percent mastery. There's like five percent yellow, we're still going to get an honor court.
So, the students, this is an achievement award across the board with, regarding all standards. So, students have to have mastery across the board to have that, to have that, achieve that honor court.
I understand. But, so, back to my question. So, even the slightest bit of yellow will not get courted?
That's correct, because it's not, it would not be considered mastery.
So, when we were at grade point averages, what did we, what was considered courted?
Hmm, I don't-
Was it a four-point-oh, or was it maybe a three-point-eight?
When we were at grade point averages, we had a valedictorian, a salutatorian. We were just identifying the two people. And then we went by grade point averages, which could change. You know, we were comparing local norms to local norms.
Did there weren't courts that time?
No, there weren't courts. There were just, uh, you went to a hierarchy of kids that could be the marshals. So, maybe the student who was third highest in grade point average could be a marshal. The second, the one that was fourth highest could be a marshal. We didn't have courts in that same thing that we do now. We started courts with the start of the standards. Now, Mr. Viek, if you wouldn't mind, share, in order to get mastery, do we have to have a hundred percent on everything?
No, no, you don't have to have a hundred percent on that. So, what the teachers look at, they, they look across the board and you can have one yellow for that and still achieve mastery for it. But overall, for it to be considered for the, the court, you have to have the mastery for all subjects. So, you can have a yellow in, let's say, ELA. You can have a yellow in, in math.
In an assignment, to be clear, in an assignment.
In an assignment, yes. In an assignment regarding a specific standard. Regarding the standard. But overall, across the standards. So, if you're, if a teacher, for example, there's a variety of different standards. If it's, uh, let's say ten standards are being assessed, right? So, student in an assignment in a specific standard can have a yellow, but across the board for those standards would be green. Then they would be eligible, but, but that's one subject. That has to be looked at across the board for all the subjects. Math, science, social studies, STEAM, writing.
I understand all the subjects, but you're saying, okay, so, let's say there's ten standards in a subject. So, if a bush has ten standards. Maybe the child gets nine greens, nine mastery standards, one yellow standard. Overall, you're still going to get a green box with a little bit of yellow?
Correct. Correct, correct.
They're typically mastering it, but they just didn't master the ones-
Correct, but it has to be, they have to have that across, for all subjects. See, kid? Okay.
Yes, she does. Yes, if there is a little bit of yellow, you're not in the green courts. Correct. There isn't a, a percent of yellow that's okay to still get the green court.
Because I've always heard, like, it could be, they can have one standard that's yellow and still get mastery, you're still here, uh, honor court.
So, in, in other places, other than here? Do you mean, I, is that what, because I was here.
Here, no, that's correct, from here. That's correct, yes.
Well, I think what you're saying is, like, let's say math. Within math, there's ten standards. If you're yellow, but you're still overall mastery. You're looking at your overall mastery as green. And then the next, so, I think what Bob's saying is that within the ten standards within math, you can have a yellow, but if there's still average or green mastery in the subject, you- No?
No, I think so.
Oh, okay.
Correct. That's why I didn't understand your question.
That's what I picked up on. Yeah, I thought you were just looking at the overall subject. If you end up being mastery, you're just looking at math, SCL, all the subjects. And if you're green, then you get it. But within that, obviously, break it down, there's ten standards. I was looking at, if you get a yellow, it's still overall average mastery. That's what you look at. Am I saying that wrong?
But you won't get a mastery if there's a yellow on one standard. You'll get a green box, just a little touch of trouble.
Correct. And especially on the cover page that has like just ELA. If you look deeper into the mastery connect report card, you'll see if we're using the number ten. The ten different standards right now, or one of them will be in yellow.
Correct, yes.
What I was trying to have, Mr. Viek, comment on was any standard. So, just think of one standard. Let's say you do ten different tests, assignments, performances for that standard. One of those, two of those, three of those can be yellow. So, it's not just if you turn, turning one test and it's yellow, or one, um, you know, everything's over at that point. You can keep moving to achieve to that green on your mastery of your summative test.
But you don't get a court. There's always a-
No, because if you get that mastery and that summative test goes green, then it's green. Even though inside that actual standard, you might have differently, a long rating.
I think she's drawing down for-
I'm really, really down for her, yeah.
Yeah, when you-
If you have one standard, okay, just one. And inside that one standard, you do different assignments. Maybe that's the word that might enter us, assignments. There could be an assignment that was yellow. But then if you learned the math problem, let's just say, or whatever it is. And then by the time you get the summative test, you know that now your summative went green. That is now green, that's here. Even though the little bits inside there might have been yellow at some point. The final standard still comes out in green.
Yeah, you just don't get yellow, that's true. You're off game. And you won't be pushed.
By the end of the standard.
Yes. Standard-based grading is about learning. It's not about averaging together your information. It's about, okay, I might have taken the first test and I looked at it and I didn't know how to do this. But by the time I got to the end, I knew how to do it and learned it. So, that then should be green if I learned it. Not averaging together a red and then yellow and a red or a green. It should be, did I learn the material? So, it's about learning. Grades are all about learning. But in your average way of grades, if you got an eighty on something, and then you got a sixty on something, and then you got a twenty on something, then when you average together into, I can't remember how much I'm talking right now, but let's say forty. Um, but standard-based doesn't do it that way. Standard-based looks at, when's the last time we assessed the standard? What did you get on? Did you learn? So, it's, it's confusing. But I think what we're looking at, from Mr. Viek's proposal, is A, moving those SCL standards into academic. Yeah, and just, he didn't really touch on this, but when you look at the standards and the way that they pulled them down, this is a, a great deal of work, um, for each standard. And they do that in math, they do that reading, they do that science, they do that social studies and everything. So, because of the attention that's put onto the second step curriculum and the common-
Common sense curriculum, which is our digital citizenship.
Curriculum, um, this year, with that whole big clock of time that is given to that, we feel that we need to elevate these standards on SCL to mean something more. And that's why we are suggesting to put them into the, sorry, the yellow court. And then it's review process. See, what happens currently, right now, is they let the kids know a couple of days before graduation.
Couple of days when we, yeah, when we really, so, um, like the Friday before, uh, the week of graduation, uh, when we release the caps and gowns, we release all that information. And then it becomes stressful because parents are contacting regarding attendance, regarding academic performance. And then we're all running, you know, running around looking at, at the grade books. Uh, we're looking in, in attendance, going back saying, no, you had, you were not here in October. There were some days that were, that the student was not there, and, and going over that. And I get it, nine months of school, you forget what happens in the beginning. That's why in this plan, what we wanted to do was outline everything, share all the expectations up for, upfront, release that information, and then have that review period so that individuals know. And we don't want to do it too soon because we want students to still be able to work hard. But we want them to know that, yes, I'm eligible for a gold court, or no. At this point, I'm not eligible for a gold court, but I'm eligible for a red or green, or say, let's say. Um, so, we want to be able to have them, uh, work towards that still. And so, we figured the month of May allows that time so that when we get closer, it's not a mad dash running around looking at everything. And then parents upset and, you know, ultimately, teachers frustrated. We wanted to kind of ease the process.
I think the commentary that I've been reading quite a lot is, Ridgewood has GPA system. You know, anything above, and I don't know what the number is.
Sure, that's odd.
Let's say, anything above a three-point-eight GPA gets a court. Here, we've got a little bit of yellow, you're out of the run. And, you know, I think that's where there's not that consistency. And then just think it's something that we probably, I, I don't know, should take a look at, should consider. I, I don't know.
We don't have numbers like that, so we don't go out with GPA. You know, I think we could look at a percent, just to see what that would look like. Just so that the board can consider that, if we wanted to look at something like that. If you're looking at a three-point-eight, I know that was just a guess for you, I'm assuming it's out of four scales. So, you've got a little bit of a difference, not a lot, you know, not a lot of it. It's not all eight or less, a little bit. I mean, it's something we can explore.
This came, and bringing up, I'm an eighth grade parent, and also during curriculum night, it was brought up quite a bit by other parents, like, what do we find out about courts? What do we need to know about courts? What do we need to know about the Spanish honor society? So, you know, it came up quite a bit.
Yeah, and it's something, unfortunately, that if we're going to make this change, we probably should have the board do an action item on. So, we're going to hold that Mr. Viek a little bit further and maybe we'll have those conversations. So, I want you to have enough time to, to consider this change. This is a bit of a change. Parents, I think, for, for me, in my role, I have had more conversations with parents about the purple court than anything else. Yeah, truly. Because, um, a parent, a student might get something of a minor, minor, but it's still a minor. And then if they get a second one later, and I get many parents that want to, you know, threaten us. I've had a parent that sat outside of my car, "Where's Park? He tried to leave with me." And you know I can leave with anybody. Um, and they just get very, very heightened about this. So, we want to try to work with our parents and ease this process for them. That's why I think in May, review time, will help them to take a look at. And then we have time for the conversations. We have time to say, oh, this is where this is, and parents can feel heard as well. Right now, with that weakness, we just feel we don't have an opportunity.
The only thing I've heard with the SCL piece of it, or it's that when coming to late, is that you're getting allergy shots or something along those lines. It really, I think a kid that's had, or a parent that's had a kid who worries, you know, like, those appointments are a pain in the heart.
Yeah, but this takes attendance out of the, this is about learning and not compliance. Which I think is good, and it's, I'd be quite frank with you. I think those areas that we've had in the past, just, you know, what we first went with when we came into, um, standard-based. But I don't think that this is a good representation of an SCL standard. So, looking at the standards that they've now, and are also tied to our curriculum. And then this is much more of a presentation about Giles. We did feel it was good for Dr. Viek to share with me, just so you know. But there's not any changes to the LE standards. This is more changes to the Giles standards. It became a compliance, you know, are you in school, are you turning in your homework? That's not learning. So, would the, would the board, what would the board like to see next? Do you want, you want us to explore a, a three-point-eight area? And we bring that back to you next month with the hope that maybe we can make an action item so that we can, Mr. Viek, move forward?
I don't want to speak too much, but I know we're here, so.
No, that's okay, your board member.
I, I'll speak first.
Is it really, uh, most of a redesignation of what qualifies as mastery and all academic?
Well, it would be a redesignation of what qualifies for the gold court. We can explore that. I don't know what that'll look like. We'd have to think that through. Obviously, need to be through a team, so it's too much, three of the teachers in play. Too, too much for this.
I think it's too much for you guys. I mean, um, is it?
One of the things that makes it difficult with tying numbers is I'll have, um, when a student transfers to a high school other than Ridgewood, they'll contact me and they don't use standard-based grading. And they'll ask me, well, what's the GPA tied to this? And I, I can, I tell them all the time, I can't answer that question because we don't have a numbered system tied to this because it's standard-based. And, and it's not the, the traditional grading system that has been used in, in the past from this district or in other districts. So, it's a complex question, so, yeah.
No, but what you could do, if there are twenty-four standards being assessed, because there are much more than ten. In an ELA standard, you can say you've had at least twenty of the twenty-four. Just throwing a number out there. Which could then come up with a percent of how much in that standard that would need to be mastery. It's an option. We, we should talk about all options.
Does that then open up the door, or like, maybe it's not yellow, like, maybe you have twenty percent mastery, but then you have a couple that are red, you know, does that open up the door for a career path?
Yes. I think it also, in my opinion, makes it less-
Awarded?
Yes. Thank you for the word.
So, for me, it's hard because this is something real. What I would, if, if we tried this last year, and I'm like, oh, I would like to know, if we did a three-point-eight, do we go from twenty courts to forty, fifty courts if it fell in there? You know what I'm saying? Like, it's hard because-
No, it's a good, good.
You know, I would like to see if, if, you know, if we had historical data, if we did this last year and if we implemented this at three-point-eight, we would have went from twenty courts to fifty courts. And we'd be like, well, okay, now that it takes away the, you know, the award of-
Yeah, we can, we can definitely pull that data.
Oh, you can?
Especially connected, is our guy.
Right, so if you had to, yeah, I, I would, I would like to see if, if you were to consider that. Last, by based on last year, we would have had, you know, these many courts if we stuck to this with no yellow. And if we had to wiggle, we're looking at an additional forty extra courts. And I think it would be something that we would look at and say, you know, we kind of want to make it the strive to, to be recognized in that. I'm not saying someone who got a three-point-eight should be recognized, but, you know.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we pull that data? Why don't we pull that data and present that at the end of the board meeting? We can still put an action item, but be very general with it on, and then we can decide what we want that to be at the end of the board. And then I think, I actually really think it's a great idea because then the board can see that, you know, and has, you've looked at everything, you've really informed on this decision you're going to make. Because it is a difficult decision. This is a very, very big deal for parents, which it should be. And I'm not complaining about that. But that's why we, we want to hold this a little bit.
I, I don't know early on in the year, but like when should we solidify and say, this is what we're doing right? We can't wait as, you know, we can't let it wait, okay? October's a little.
October 21st is our meeting, I wouldn't have wanted to leave that.
Okay.
So that's why I would certainly send in the data as soon as we have it, you can look at it yourselves. So that when you come to the meeting, I will be prepared with, you know, yours. Or we can talk beforehand, of course, individually with board members without more. I gotta split that.
So for sure, if we have to put it might be a D minus, this is my.
I know, I, I, I understand, I see where you're going. I, I still struggle with the fact that, you know. Correct, yeah, and plus.
Well, that's a whole nother.
You know, we talked about it before where it's like you have, you know, obviously with parent and kids to go through the, the school system in the district, right? And then it's, it's a complete turnaround when you get to Ridgewood, right? They do something completely different, GPAs and grade point averages, As and Bs and Cs. Like, is it too much as a district to ever consider as you get to eighth grade, that it changes, it starts to like roll into Ridgewood, right? That they, when they're there, you know, is that too much to ask for? How we grade eighth grade is differently than the rest because they're getting prepared to go into, to the high school where it's something different.
Yeah, we can have it as special, so we can continue to look.
I, I don't want you to waste time if the board is not all, you know, like, wouldn't consider that, you know.
I know, Mr. Beatty, if I may put you on the spot there, your, your children have standard-based in their district, but also do give up.
They have a merge. It's, it's a merge system that they have where as a, as a parent, you could just look at the standard-based grading. But if you wanted as a parent to dig deeper, to specifically know if, for example, if it, if it's in math and, and I want to dig deeper, what my, why my, my child is struggling on a specific standard or concept, I can dig deeper, click within that, that circle, and then it opens it up more. And then I, I can see, I can see that. So it's a, it's a merge system, which is, which is an option that, that can be used.
We do have that.
Yeah, well, in our, in master grades, you refer to.
Well, when I'm, I'm sorry, when I guess when I'm referencing that it would be like an A, or an A, it would be a letter grade, like a traditional letter grade that's tied to it. As a parent, you can see that and then you can, you can move on. But there's a lot of work that go, and I don't know if it's something that, it, it's going to take time. I don't know if, if one year, you know, I mean, it's going to take time to implement that so that everyone is on the same page, making sure that across the board, all, all four grade levels fit six, seventh, and eighth, that it, it meets the, that it's tied and then it, it moves up as they grow throughout the years at Giles.
And it's not a system we currently have.
It's not, and that's why it, it may be something that has to be evaluated, looked at, discussed.
Grading system is a multi-year product. Nothing can't do it, but it's a multi-year product.
You know, because I, I envision it as it's where, you know, mastery and our, the standard-based model is very broad, right? So I, my kid is eighth grade, all mastery, so I'm like, this is great. And they get to Ridgewood and it's like, oh, you got to get plus. I'm like, oh, what's a mastery just for like, how is that a B? Like, we've always have been under pressure that they're going to trade As because they're A's or mastery. Now that you go there, it's like, well, yeah, no, it's actually A plus. And it's like, oh, you know, it's, it's a minus, you know, but I don't know.
To give you comfort with my four children, same, same thing. They'll, they'll meet the standards, they'll hit the grade points, they're, they're, they're where they need to be. Then they get to the high school and it's a whole new world. Different expectations, the, you know, we're very nurturing as it is in our, our mission statement. We're very nurturing to our students, but it's a whole different world when you get to that high school level.
And I could be wrong where I'm looking at like, are you paying preschool K through fourth grade or fifth grade even? Like, you know, we had this split, but that the standard base makes sense, right? They're younger, they want to learn, they want to, but at some point, there's value to A, B, C, D. And maybe you can, as a district, if they do a word junior high, it's different grading system. And so, yeah, the first year of fifth grade might be something that parents have to get adapted to, but they also have three more years to understand it than when they go to high school. It's a nice, you know, I don't know, it's something to think about. Because it makes sense for younger kids, right? You just want them to learn, understand, and that's where that, that grading scale comes. But at some point, you know, you're going to get to high school and college where it's going to be more of a A, B, C, D grading scale, right? So they have time to, yeah, but obviously this is not something that can happen overnight, but it's something that is a war we should consider. Do we have our administrative team start looking into what that would look like? And, and if that's something we see of, you know, the future of our district.
It's very elementary, mastery development.
Correct, right.
Treating these kids like they're in junior high, they should be in junior high.
I, yeah, I don't disagree. We, we do everything to try to mirror up to, to high school, right? Because we want to prepare district A students as they get into high school that they're, they're, you know, they're caught up, they, they can get into it. And even something as simple as grades, you know, could help them adapt and adjust a lot quicker than getting there and just your whole freshman year and just kind of confusing how, how, how they're going. But it's something to talk about.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we do a phase one, phase two obviously being looking at a new grading system. Which we can do. It'll, it'll take multiple years, but we can definitely get there. Phase one, then, do you want us next month to bring you back A deck data on how many additional cords or if any additional cords we have, we went to some similar to a 3.8 to a 4? Let's say it that way. I'd have to run some math, I can't do that sitting here, on how many standards there are. Do you want us to bring that data to you next month? Then we'll make a decision on how we move forward. Are you comfortable with these three or is that still in question also?
Speaking myself, we, we have board numbers one, we see that what, what the gold, what the gold cord could be. So if you did, as you referenced, what Reynolds said, if you get four point, determine what 4.8 is in that, all three, determine what 3.9 is in that, and see how many more students would have received that 3.8 or 3.9.
Just, just for clarity, like, sorry, I originally, like, when they say it's a cord, it's like, I agree, there was like an honor society. Is that like the honor society? That's something, that's something, this is just a cord, that they got three more.
Yeah.
You're, you're about 10%.
It's about 10%.
Yeah, it's, it's something I struggle with, honestly. Mr. Beatty and I were working on this presentation. We call them honor cords, but it, it isn't honor. Honor, you typically think of something higher or something. It isn't, it's still a wonderful culture.
Anthony, listen, at the end of the day too, you know, the trades can move out and everyone gets, puts us together. Like, you know, justify why you feel that all green should be, why it means a lot to get all green, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, just because we feel one way. But you guys sell the, the fact of why you think it's all, shall all be green. Because this is the recognition, this is why, you know, the deserving aspect of it, the awarding aspect of it. This is why we feel this way. Just because I understand what the board, but I'd like to hear the other side of why you feel that it puts us together. And I, not saying it's not, I might not go for it. I just, you know, the justification of why you feel that this is best for our district and why it's awarded to, to have all of this.
I agree. Let's do that next month. All right, thank you all very much. So now we're going to move to our assistant principal report tonight. Typically in the beginning of the year, I like to review attendance and tardies with the board. We have slight changes on our attendance and tardy policies and supports that Mr. Amalo is going to share with us.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So just when you thought you were done with green, yellow, red, green, yellow, red. So our attendance and tardy policies that the board has implemented this year three, ish.
Yes.
So it's been a few years now. The highlight of the, of both policies is that it is a supporting approach. It's not a punitive approach. And as we walk through the tiers for each one, it's, it's a tier system. So just like, you know, an M T S S or R P I program or our behavior, our academics, we look at tier one, tier two, and tier three. And that tier one is our universal support. Every kid in the district is tier one. But when we need more support, we're looking at what are those looking at tier two and furthermore, tier three. So to talk a little bit about the attendance policy, what that looks like is for tier one, we're establishing those expectations for coming to school with all of our students. It's a general, you know, expectation, it's a compliance piece, but it's also, you know, academically healthy piece. If we're not in school, we're not going to be successful academically. We're also not going to be successful socially either, so that whole child approach. Typically, when you're looking at tiers and levels, you're looking at, you know, about 80% of our students would fall into tier one. 15% would fall into tier two and 5% would fall into tier three. Those are, those are statistical marks. When you're looking at, you know, 486 students, you're going to have students in all three tiers. And the goal is, is to keep it in this, this triangle format. So just what it looks like is tier one supports, a student is anywhere from zero to eight absences. Once we get to five absences, that's going to be a communication home from an administrator, typically a assistant principal. We do have students that, I know we're only in week three, but we do have some students that we have five absences already. So what we've done with this is communicate at home first and explain why we're going to see an email that comes home. So we have a, we have a standard email that goes out that addresses families and says, basically this is, hey, we've noticed that your child has five absences. We're here to support you. This isn't a, we're calling, you know, the police on you, we're not doing any of those things. How can we support you? Is there something going on that we can help with? Are there obstacles that we can maybe help remove? Is it something where a student is just nervous about coming to school? Especially we, we, we've got really little guys coming in and they get nervous and they get scared. Sometimes they don't want to come in. But how do we work with families to, to ensure that this is a safe, nurturing environment for their child to come to? As that continues on, tier two would look like, once we get to 90 absences, a phone call will be made by myself to the parents, the guardians. We may set up a meeting with the student and or parents. And then the same thing repeats if we get to 13. These are basically just like benchmarks as we're, as we're progressing along. And then for each one of the benchmarks, we intensify our support a little bit more. When we get to 15 absences, we're looking at tier three supports where now we're talking about not only communication in terms of phone calls and emails, but in-person meetings for sure with the family to see if we can work through some things and put a behavior intervention plan in place that could help the child get to school. Once we get to 17 absences, we're looking at possibly home visit, possibly some other supports. For example, I've been in touch with West Forty and their truancy department. So we haven't connected yet, but introduced myself today. And they have supports that they can do from their end, whether that's, you know, any type of wraparound services, community services, home visits themselves, just things that, how do we work with families to get students here? There's 100 different reasons why kids may not be coming to school. How can we help support them to get here? So that's what this method is all about. For the tardiness, it's a very similar system where we have benchmarks in there for when we're going to be communicating home and how we're going to be doing this. It, sometimes we overlook tardiness, it's not that big of a deal. But as Dr. Aviola put out his tracks, I think the first week, was that just 10 minutes a day being late equates to 30 hours a year of lost learning time. It doesn't sound like much, but it's a big deal. So again, when we see things happening and when we see patterns, we're going to be working to support families throughout the process. So again, the, the tardy policy is, nears the attendance policy pretty much, where we're looking at after five tardies, nine tardies, 13, as we go down that line, the level of supports that we're going to put in place. Again, it's not a punitive system, it's a support system. Now, that's the compliance piece. What we like to do, and I'll speak to leave, celebrating our students that are coming to school. So a couple of different ways we do this, we have some options to do. September, September celebration is the stay cool, come to school celebration, where freeze pops will be the reward for the winning grade level. So the entire grade level at Wynn's will do like a Friday freeze pop celebration for them. And how we do that is we take the weekly attendance, we look at it by our percentage of attendance. And I am happy to report that school-wide right now, we're averaging it's over 95% attendance, which is really good. You know, sometimes things happen where kids come back to school and all of a sudden, you know, we're going home sick, you know, to, we're getting together the people we haven't been with in a while. Sometimes we're not feeling so good. We're 95, we're over 95% right now, so that's looking great. And what we'll do is, this is an example of popcorn reward from last year. We're doing freeze pops this month. But each of the little popcorn containers are showing the grade level and the weekly percentages of where they're at. So we will display this for the, for the freeze pops. And then once we get to the end of September, we'll announce the winning grade level.
At Giles, we celebrate our students with a trimester, at the end of each trimester with a pizza party. And based on that implementation that we did last year, we have seen growth, we have better data. Food's always the motivator to us, our students. But also the academic piece, letting them know that, you know, it's important to make sure you set goals for yourself, you're working hard to attain those goals, and that it's not a, can't be a short-term goal, has to be a long-term goal. So through our staff, through advisory, through our building relationships, having discussions, our communication with our parents through our newsletter, those are all helpful, helpful ways to celebrate and get the word out that it's important to be in school.
Question for this celebration, if they, again, have a doctor's appointment or something, would that come against them?
So the absences are broken down into two categories, which is excused and unexcused absences. For the tally of the attendance, both of them go into, so short-term, yes, it would count against because they're absent. Again, that might be something we could look at, but that is the, the current policy.
And Giles, is that individually, that qualifiers at, based by class?
Oh, it's individual.
Okay.
Yeah, that's based on individual.
And they qualify with perfect attendance or?
Yeah, perfect attendance, showing up. We also look at tardies as well, making sure, and celebrate that as well. We're also, we're, actually, we're doing a pizza party tomorrow too, but not in regards to our attendance. But we have a pizza party scheduled for all of our new students as well, just as a way to get all of our new students that are in the building together, celebrate them, and, and kind of make them feel at home in their new school.
I do want to just point out on both of these attendance and tardies, if you look down at the bottom, or if you have 19 or more, which is extremely obsessive, one of the options that we have used in the past, and it's actually been very successful, is the Norwich Police Department going out and issuing a ticket to the child's family. Currently, right now in Illinois, it is banned from issuing a ticket to the student. However, we feel interpreting that mula to mula means we still need to parent. There are some people that disagree with that. So that's still kind of getting worked out. And of course, we utilize our, now our S R O officer who helps with that. In any way, if we can't issue a ticket, we still would have our S R O officer work with the family. The good part of issuing the ticket and. The good part of issuing the ticket, and Mr. Biethe has attended many of these, then their parent has to go to family court or to court, nor in Norwich. And it's not the money. It truly is not. If the, if the ticket even stays with, the financial aspect is rare. But the communication and the talking between the judge, Mr. Biethe from the school district, and the family typically help. And just help to have that, you know, the judge will say, what's going on? Where are we? You know, many times I've gone behind and talked with the family and say, he needs to get out of school. You know, as, as we pointed out earlier, there could be things going on that we don't know are going on. And as the, in my role or in any of their roles over there, we want help. So if there's something going on, where a student is having school refusal in some way, somebody is bothering that student and we don't know about it, that's a problem. So we have this, this tiered system in order to help us to talk to parents, to talk to families, to work with families quicker and quicker. As you know, attendance and tardies do count against us. And I already did on Illinois State Board group report. So we do work very hard on trying to get kids to school. Plus, kids are more successful when they're in school. Any other questions about that? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mula to administrative reports. Superintendent Kuzik, do you have a?
No.
A special education, Mr. Masterson?
Sure, I've got two quick updates. So one is actually a celebration. Our preschool program was actually recently awarded with a gold rating through the ISD Accelerate Program, which is basically a quality assurance improvement system. So that is the highest recognition that they can give. So bravo to our preschool team. It's very exciting to see that. And then also, our special education committee will be meeting on the end of this month, September thirtieth. We're gonna be talking about a host another of topics throughout the department, including considering different approaches to writing and kind of leveling that across all of our writing goals, such as using norm reference criteria to ensure that consistency. Thank you for the report.
Thank you very much. Building one more. Giles, mula to Mr. Biethe.
I'd like to thank the PTA. We had our first assembly with Stanley the Bear. It was Bear Down on Bullies, which was our first, our first work with our students and having them treat each other with respect. So it was a very successful assembly. So thank you to the PTA for getting us started. Also, I wanna make note to everyone for sixth grade parents, physicals and immunization are due by October fifteenth. If a student is not in compliance with the Illinois State Board of Education law, they are, they are not able to attend school come October sixteenth, which is a month from today. So I've been communicating, blasting out to our sixth grade families. Just wanna make note, please get your physicals turned into nurse's nully and make sure the vaccinations are complete. The vision test, or excuse me, dental test is May fifteenth. So they have some time for that. But if you have it, just turn it into our nurse's office. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee School, Dr. Aviola?
Thank you. Also, I wanna give a thanks throughout to the PTA for bringing Stanley to lead as well. That was a great time. And also wanted to, you know, make sure to say thank you to Norwich Schools Foundation for the sensory pad and the two outdoor picnic tables that they were able to provide. Those are gonna be, we're looking for a spot either in the courtyard or the south lot to put those on. And looking forward to having a little spot where kids can, you know, sit and gamble a little bit outside. And also, just wanna mention that we have completed our beginning of the year assessments. And right now, we're in the stage of planning out all of our wind time plans, that's our interventions. And we're really excited this year with having two interventionists that lead because we, at the majority of our grade levels, we've been able to significantly expand the number of students that we're able to provide that support. And that's really exciting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Discipline reports, Giles?
No report.
In Lee School?
No report.
Good, thank you. Board committees. Education, nothing to report. It would have been a merge to the regular meeting if so. Board policy development, we met like before tonight's meeting and reviewed the policy on nineteen.
Most of it until the seven hundreds because this coming month, we will review the seven hundreds and meet on that the following months.
The seven hundred chart on the table for the board?
Yeah.
They're, they're E B, so this is gonna take us a couple of months.
Yeah.
But they're reporting, this is on instruction.
Billion grounds, Superintendent Kuzik will address any further discussions. Pedro intervention, nothing to report. It would be in the, the strike their meeting if so. Negotiations and human resources, I just wanted to thank the teachers' union, me, for their working with us. The contract is now signed. Finance, we had our hearing earlier with this meeting, and then a bit later, we will vote whether to approve the budget. Communications, I understand the fall edition is soon to be finalized. The newsletter, I should say. Norwich Park District, again, I'd like to thank them for their accommodating boys and girls soccer at the park. Very helpful. And now on to discussion items.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, begin with, I wanted to share, as I do every September, where our enrollment is. The number of preschoolers at this enrollment, seventy-one, I think we had a couple more join us after the screening on last Friday. That's a really good place to be in September. As you know, the preschool program, we can have a hundred and twenty students in the classroom, but they grant covered a hundred and two. So seventy-one is great, wonderful. We had ninety-six last year. And I'm sure that by the time we get to the end of the year, that number will be up and going up. Kindergarten, pretty steady. We have seen a decrease in kindergarten students, seventy-two, seventy-three this year. One of our theories had been on that is because families were looking at other options for longer daycare in kindergarten, which had been holding still, but we look at the first grade numbers this year, they're not up as much as they've been in the past. Typically, we bring in eighteen to twenty new first graders, and we didn't this year. So that is definitely an area we're gonna have to watch. We do only have four first grade classrooms, four kindergarten classrooms. If that trend continues, then we're gonna have to have some hard conversations about that. Second grade, pretty steady at a hundred and four to a hundred and eight. Third grade now, you'll see that increase started to hit where we had a hundred and twenty-eight, now a hundred and five, and then that continues through. I will read all those numbers for you. Our highest numbers being in all of our classes at Giles. We did not see a great increase, as we have been failing on Ukrainian students this year, for whatever reason. Last year, I think we had sixty new students, and this year, we did not see that increase. So I don't know if that's something that will continue in the future. I don't know if that's our current climate of the world. I'm not sure. That's definitely something we're thinking on. So we'll continue to watch enrollment and have conversations, probably starting in January, about what we'll project for next year, based on our projection. I just wanna point out that we're using a new format for the weekly tracks. One of our goals last year was to update the website, which we did. We started a new website around July first. I've heard wonderful feedback on the weekly tracks and on the new website. And the tracks now, which I think like over ninety percent of our people, our, our parents are looking at the tracks on their phones and not on a computer. And this opens up completely on their phone now. So it's so much user-friendly than it was. Here's a copy, or this is what the Giles tracks is. We still have a side index over here in the left, so if you want to go directly to the launchpad, you can do that and go through and see what you have. This also translates up here in this translate button. And if you choose your language, there are over a hundred and gone, and I think it's a hundred and twenty-four to gone. Which, in my mind, you didn't know there was something there. And it is, of course, LADA accessible as well. So I wanna thank the admin team. This was definitely a change moving over to this format. But our administrative assistants in the offices have done a really great job, and we're really proud of our, our changes on the tracks. As you know, in September, it's big fire, a big safety drill month. We have been rolling out our standard response protocol, which is in line with the other area schools. And if this is to my knowledge, the first time we've all been in line on what we're using in the words. And that is so that the areas surrounding emergency departments can also use the same words. So I just, a couple of weeks ago, sent out all of the safety information for Giles, so it's a little bit different from, from lead. And then in this past week's tracks, I talked about asking parents how they can help us with having conversations with our children at home. So we do the big education piece all throughout the year. We run, running the drills. We do have safety checks. Safety checks are when we stop in the morning at school at Giles and we check everyone's backpack. We now have put in vape detectors in all of our bathrooms at Giles. We have not received a student vape incident as of today. Hopefully, we won't get one tomorrow, but I just said that. We also do have contractors with safety dogs that will walk through Giles. They look for different items that shouldn't be in a school. We have our procedures moving forward, and we're finalizing that. In fact, our SRO officer, Officer Tomaso, is working on a crisis manual book and updating everything. And of course, we are now full on with our alarm locks this year. So all of our doors are locked during the day, all day. And Mrs. Garcia has been working very hard on getting those up and running. Little things that happen here and there, like a battery has to be changed out, but overall, it's been very smooth this year. Except for this year, we started the year with all the alarm locks on. Which working well, and on even the Saturday rentals of the two schools. Everything's going really well. So big safety month, lot of different things going on in Giles. Policy review for this month, the policy committee met. August, July, I can't remember when we met. And we go to the six hundreds. We also had some input from some board members. So today, in board book, you will have seen, you'll see a page that goes through what the policy is and that what we're recommending changing. These are pretty minor. As you can see, adding like the vision and the mission statements in six-ten was only the mission statement. Decided to add the vision also. Six-point-three-zero is clarifying half-day and full-day kindergarten. We will have to change that again in twenty-twenty-seven, but that's, that's okay. Six colon one-six-zero is a clarify multi-English learners instead of English learners. We decided in six colon two-one-zero to clarify the movie ratings. It did say a movie that was R. Had to have superintendent. We moved that down to PG. And we do, that is what we do in policy. And whenever we do watch a movie like that, we send out notification there. Like if they read a book and then they watch a movie afterwards. Clarify access to electronic network with six colon two-three-five. And then clarifying our resource, resource persons volunteers. That resource person is not the school resource officer. That's people that come in and provide resources for our students. So we are recommending that we pass all of that tonight and consent. And then you have the seven hundred with you today. So one of the other topics that I have in my discussion today is I have been talking with a parent who wanted me to bring to the board and wanted the board to have a conversation, just revisit the issue with smartwatches. I gave you a little snippet here of what the student parent handbook currently has in it. And it does say that smartwatches, along with phones, smartphones, audio visual equipment, all should be off and away during the day. I was like, powered on. So today, I'm asking the board to have a conversation or to discuss if this is the policy that we wanna continue with. And I'm gonna share with you the conversation that I had with a particular parent. The name is very not important, it doesn't matter. Just that I had the conversation with the parent this week, this week. So this parent feels that it is important for the board to revisit this policy because they feel that the positives of a smartwatch in particular outweigh the negatives that a smartwatch might possibly bring in a school setting. For example, the parent believes that their child has a monitoring of their blood pressure during the day, their heart rate, and of course, their location. So those levels of protection. And there have been some studies where a student might have an issue with blood pressure or heart rate, and they had a smartwatch has notified family that their parent. That is true. There have been studies of that. And they feel that that information outweighs any of a safety, when I say safety, I mean safety on the internet or safety on technology that, that we have outlined before. And also, just to show you here's what the policy states. Policies in our seven colon one-nine-zero, where it talks about how electronic devices must be off in the way. So just to be a little idea of Illinois law, Illinois law considers smartwatches wearable technology. That's the phrase that they use, wearable technology. And there has been a proposal about on wearable technology in Illinois. It is Senate Bill twenty-four-twenty-seven. And this came up in the last Senate when they met. And it was called by the Senate, and it did pass fifty-five to zero. So it is a bill that was passed on all sides of the Senate. It was never called in the House. It was solely tabled in the House. I read a couple of different articles on why it was not called in the House. Most of them referred to the fact that there was a deficit budget that had to be discussed in the House, and it just got pushed under. One article I read about that said that they wanna tweak some things in the policy. And I don't know, it is supposed to pass. It's expected to be called in the fall of the session. So that, that says that a district must create a policy that states that wearable technology, including smartwatches, of course, also phones, would be limited use during instruction time and incorporate guidance for safety and secure storage by twenty-six, twenty-seven. Again, this is not passed, but that's just what the law states, if it does pass. So should we consider changing the policy? You know, why would we wanna consider that? Going off that information that when I spoke with the parent, they also did feel that it isn't consistently followed in the district, which I agree with. I did, I agreed with him on that. The parent's feeling was, you might have one teacher that might say, take it off, and one teacher that might not say, take that off. That to me is an error on administrative side, not on, and that could mean anything. The other reasons why we consider changing the policy is student health data, monitoring the blood pressure and heart rate, the GPS tracking that also happens on a smartwatch. And you could do fitness tracking on it. You can see how many steps you walked, you know, throughout the day. Reasons why we should consider not changing the policy is it's a classroom distraction. Students become too connected to the outside world of that classroom. So when you're in the classroom, you should be focused on being in the classroom, learning in the classroom. And while I understand it might be a parent texting his stu, his students, because even if you're on like a school mode, you can have a parent come through and text a student. There are ways that a parent can contact a student in a school day by calling the office and getting a message to the student that wouldn't need to go through the student's watch. That's on that. Student safety. So this one kind of goes both ways with me, where I understand the GPS aspect of it. However, if there was a crisis that would happen, that student needs to focus on the teacher's direction and not on what the parent is telling them to do inside of their watch. Now, the I love you guys organization started because there was an incident that happened in a school. And a particular child of the people that started this texted parents, I love you guys. And that's how that whole organization started. The I love you guys organization, which is what we are following up our training under in Norwich and Howard Heights, Shilla Park, is every 15 minutes, if a student has a device, they should take that device out and text the parent if there was a crisis situation going on. However, after that 15 minute text, they really should be putting their phones down so that they can allow systems to be open. If you have something, some kind of crisis that happens at a school, you have systems that become, am I talking about what systems is? The phone system, the crowding of all those systems that could become an issue. Another area, students have access to social media in all areas though. So if a student is walking home with that watch on, they're going into a bathroom, they now have access to social media with that. They have access to texting each other. It becomes, could become a distraction and quite frankly, it could become a discipline issue. I guess my next comment on dependence of technology. To me, I think it's an issue in our society today, but having too dependent on technology. Like if it's something down the road, and I'm not qualified to say this, just my personal opinion, it's something down the road that that occurs. Not all parents will use the parenting controls. Some will, and some will be very responsible for that and some won't. And it is not up to that teacher to look at the watch to figure out who is using what. It also would encourage offline activities. And the question on if their age appropriate to whatever they could find or search or text or look up on, I don't know. We asked for the Pro Books, that the Pro Books have protections on them that would stop them from being able to look up or go out to different places. But ultimately, this is board policy, just like all the other board policies that we have. So that is something that you as a board need to have a discussion about and decide if that's something that you would like us to change in our policy. And it's probably more of a change in our handbook than our policy because I would think this period, this part in 7:190 would stay either way.
Other districts are very consistent.
So I found, I can tell you about around us, Ridgeway doesn't have a ban except during testing. New York, they have those, do you remember those things you put your shoes on on the back of the doors? So they have those, you go in your class, you put your phone in there, you put your watch in there. You go off in class, you do your stuff, you leave, you pick up your stuff and you lock up. Some schools, but not the ones around us, actually have those packs that lock. I think here, I think Mrs. Garcia's husband's home has that. And that, so Union Ridge doesn't have a specific ban on it. However, they do still have the same language that we have a lot in a way in their information as well. In the United States, it varies state from state. I think there are different states that have bans on on cell phones. France and the Netherlands, Britain have all banned them, which I thought was very interesting. That's why I included that there. I found a, some research done by Ed Weekly, which was done in August of 2024, where they asked, you know, who, what percentage of of school districts have that, have a policy or not? Thirty-four percent of them said it was permissible in certain situations to have a smartwatch. Twenty-nine percent consider, are considering a full policy of banning them. Twenty-six percent are not considered, considering a policy at all. And 11% have banned them completely.
So we don't really think there's a policy in the district or Correct. And you said, do you think they have a policy?
They have the same language that we have right here. But they don't have a, that language that we have right here. When I asked all of the area superintendents, they were like, yeah, kids don't wear that watch. Like this wasn't a wish. And then I will just, I'll be quiet after this. Did you want to share the others?
Hold on, we'll have to finish and we'll get what you can speak and I'll hide out input from the two members, not the other three. But did care to send an email with their
I think that's everything.
Should I mention that now?
Sure.
Jim Boljack's response. I feel policies should not be changed to allow smartwatches to be worn unless it is medical necessary. We've brought in an SRO to address safety concerns. I do not see the benefit of allowing that to be worn, but rather see a potential for an increase in distractions, along with the potential for damage to happen. I see more negatives that can come from a policy change of those policies. Amanda wrote. From my experience teaching in classrooms, substitute teacher, current, I believe we should not change the policy to allow smart, to allow smartwatches. These devices create unnecessary distractions and take away from values of instructional time, which should remain fully focused on learning. I understand parents' concerns about safety, but I believe our district is addressing those concerns effectively, including through the high-level school resource officer.
I mean, obviously I see both sides, right? In the world we live today, there's a lot of these advantages, that extra layer of security for parents. But I also see a potential distraction. I feel that if something like this, then we really have to look at, as we're doing going for our policies, go to hold everyone accountable to make sure they're enforcing these policies that is streamlined or, you know, so we don't get into these kids do, just because my teachers addressing and the others don't, it becomes an issue. I do also think with, you know, cell phones in general, like some of the things you addressed, with potential distractions, even though it's away and put away, they still can sneak it. They can still bring it into the bathroom. And we don't search, you know, every kid before you go to the bathroom to make sure their phone's not there. So there's always going to be, no matter what policy you put in place, that there's could be potential distractions that people are using and trying to fit around certain policies. So it's just because you put something in writing, it's not going to restrict potential distractions. So I'm torn between both. And I see both sides, so.
Kind of a process to I think he's passed on both circumstances for Yes, it's good access, good phones. You know, and I heard it before, it's a bit of an honor to listen to a lot of specific access. And he's been a much better. But I actually think of potential distractions. But I just think we can't just keep following the policy. Can't just say this is a policy. A lot I think I get, this has ever been. It's not bad. It's not bad. I'm getting a little worried. Because to me, it's like, you tell me that, you know, hopefully that's our law officer. But it's what we teach students. So if that's our law officer's here, he's looking at second to the child, what happens? You know, it's, or vice versa. But I get policies are policy. I think we don't have like, you know, sort of risk of distraction is probably greater than, you know, than it would. Hopefully we never have to be in a situation where it gets triggered that or occur to that. But that one time, because that one possibility, they are triggered. And it's not, you know, as I suppose, it's a
And I think in everything, right, or the risk and, you know, people are going to, you know, if someone has an Apple Watch and that they could be good and not use it, and there's always a bad apple that might be a distraction. And then do you look at it as, you know, you punish, it's hard to say, punish the kids that are responsible and, you know, because there's a couple that may get a distraction, right? So, you know, for like me, for I have another thing to say.
Go ahead.
I believe that parents can convince their child to say, if you were wearing it, you wouldn't do this, 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 and this. But if I were to warn student that would be disciplined not to do a good deed on Friday, couldn't, preform, couldn't. Can't be selective and say, you have to discipline the way this is a smartwatch. You all can't. So that we're all, it goes there. We wouldn't be like, it'd be like reading policy tape or just can't do that. From what I understand, that's superintendent. We're bent for not to, that is superintendent. In a few words possible, what is your suggestion?
My suggestion would be to keep the handbook as it is, keep the policy ready as it is. Just let the teachers teach. You just want to teach. And there's so many distractions throughout the day to begin with. Let's not put another thing on that we have to worry about, smartwatch.
One of the things I would say, actually, I'll help us talk to our I was trying to review, how does the smartwatch make us students safer? And all I can really think of just enables the student to tell their parent to go pay fast. It's a matter of speed and ease. I'm going to take my look at it. But in the actual happening of anything dangerous, I don't see what the advantage. Especially when in any time of danger, the teacher has to have a band with this classroom and say, you can be quiet, I'll be quiet, what are you going to do? You know, listen to me, like, I'm going to help keep us all safe. And what would you want kids going? That's, that's just a little, that was a exaggeration, but the teacher does need to come into the classroom. That's saying the teacher is being trained what to do. And I was going to ask, apart from early in the year, and maybe, so they need to have classes in the beginning of the year. Yeah, SRO is meeting with them.
Referring to the teachers or the
The teacher, I'll go there.
Yes, and the training?
In terms of classroom management, in terms of, so you mean endangerment, so.
Yes, we, you know, we're working on that reification plan. So there are, we are constantly working with the teachers. And Officer Tomaso does a very big role in that.
And then another question. Because you have a, this slide here, the slide with safety tracks. When any of these situations, even when slightly approaching anything concerning safety locked out at any time, if at those times, the student says, can I contact my parent? And it's in terms, you could allow that?
So in a crisis time, then what we are training the teachers is, yes, you want the student, if it's, if it's a phone, if it's a smartwatch and it's in their backpack, and that's where they are, you know, in the classroom, then they're, they're going to tell them. That is the training in your Do you want to hear from your child? I have heard, and I don't know if this is a solution at all, but I have heard a conversation, had a conversation with a bunch of preschool parents, and they have those AirTags, I guess they have shoes that they don't have too, but they've heard of their shoes. I think it's got yours. They have AirTags in their kids' backpacks. Now, an AirTag, from what I understand, I don't have one, I haven't experienced with it firsthand, but you can track where, where things are. And I don't know if that's another peace of mind for a parent, maybe. Maybe that's an option and that's not a two-way communication device. And I understand that's limited, but at least you'd be able to look at and know, I mean, it's a peace of mind. I know, but I know much of our school parents are, are you, and I understand their shoes now that have a little pocket that you can even pull on.
I also think if there is a situation where there's a safety concern, of course you're continuing to focus on the adult that is trying to keep them safe in that situation. But also, while I think like we tell ourselves that it would be reassuring to be able to communicate with them in their back of our child right away, you may or may not. And just because you don't hear back from them right away, doesn't mean they're not safe. They could be following a diversion, they could be moving from one A to B. So it could also cause unnecessary fear in those situations too. Or are you reaching out to your child and not hearing back? So that it can, you know, in the same way, you maybe, my mom will call me and I will call back for a couple of hours. The caller is just starting to worry about you. You know, it creates this illusion that you can have some contact and you can't always.
He has the most recent, I saw an email go out reinforcing the policy. You know, I, how do parents even know that they're not allowed? And that we had a lot of distractions with Apple watches or watches that So I don't think it's going to, I'm not saying to consider changing the policy. I don't know if, have we had a lot of issues with Apple watches as a distraction? I'm not saying they can never happen, because I'm sure it does. But if we started enforcing it, it might inspire a little bit more and louder conversations of that. You know, I'm not saying, you know, do we, do we put policies in place because, yes, we want to follow. But at the end of the day, we also don't want our teachers to be looking at people's wrists to say, no watches, no watches. Or do we say, all right, it's in there, so we have support. If it does come to that, say, hey, it's our policy. But at the same time, it's very, somewhat gray where if you see a kid that is a refugee or you hear a distraction, that's where you have to say, well, it's part of the policy, right?
Absolutely, yeah. I think, you know, I can comment on, I can comment on all that, but a teacher's not looking for it. Just like you, as someone just mentioned, you can have your cell phone on, right? Cell phones are supposed to be off in a way. But if a student, student is going off to the bathroom, a student is going in, we're not checking the student. You know, we're not, they're not walking in the door, arms up with their shirts, you know? It becomes more of, if, if it's noticed, take it off and put it away. That's really what it is. You might identify that as a gray area. I don't see that as gray. I see that as, we're not checking every kid for every watch. And I don't want us to do that. That's not, we're not in a military state to where we need to be. The kids walk in and we're checking them, just like we're not checking to see if their phone is in their pocket. You know, we say it's off and away, we see it, it's taken away. Basically, on the phone, it's at the junior high or the middle school. Can you comment on Can you comment on that, um, do you see distractions with smart watches?
Oh, absolutely. There'll be a, uh, student may not, uh, may not be feeling well, they'll go to the bathroom, contact their parent either on their cellphone or their Apple Watch, and then the parent shows up. We're not aware, the main office is not aware, the nurse is not aware, administration is not aware, so we have to figure that out. We'll also have a situation where a student may not be getting along with another student. Uh, good choices are not being made, hurtful things are being said to each other. Student will go to another area, make a phone call, parents show up, we don't have answers. It's always frustrating for me as an administrator, when I don't have an answer for a parent, and I always, I need to investigate. Allow me to investigate, which means my entire schedule that I had, meetings, all stop. And then I investigate because I have a parent that is, that's upset, and I'm looking into the situation so that I can resolve the situation. As Mrs. Guzic said, we're, we're not looking for it, but if I'm eating with the child and I see the child with long sleeves, and then the long sleeves go back, I see it have the watch, I'll say, what's our policy? Off and away, and that means not on yourself, that means in your backpack. It needs to be turned off and in your backpack. Once you enter our property, when you're leaving, once you leave our property, I tell the kids all the time, grab your cellphone, grab your Apple Watch, whatever you need to do, tell everyone, whatever you need to tell them, just be kind to each other. But do what you need to do on, on your personal device. Just don't do it here, because it truly becomes a distraction to the learning environment. And the number one, the number one individuals that are contacting their, are the, the children, are the parents. I afford, I afford, I'm guilty of it sometimes with my own kids. It's just, it happens, but it's a huge distraction and it takes away from learning.
Uh, so we've had similar situations, uh, like Mr. Giedt, so we have had multiple times where parents would, you know, show up to, and all of them come in to pick them up, because I heard they went eating well and called in, there's, there's like, there's not here. You know, so obviously those are situations where we would like to just, you know, make sure it goes through our process, you know, we're aware of those types of things. Uh, or if, you know, there is time for this, we want to be able to empower ourselves and be able to handle some of those situations. Uh, and then, you know, we, we do have some parents who, yeah, they, they feel like they should, you know, be able to, to wear that, you know? And it's one of those challenging situations, because it isn't something that, I think the reason that it's not, you know, people feel that it's not enforced consistently, because it is something where it's, oh, come on in, where we're actually looking for it. Sometimes there's a situation in a classroom where you see a student doing something and then that comes where it might be, oh, does anyone else have a watch you need to put away? So that way it doesn't seem like you're seeing like that one particular child and then, you know, you find a few others and as you're trying to force it that way. So, you know, it's, I think it's complicated, because you don't wanna, you know, run the system of, oh, you know, roll up your sleeves, let's see what's going, you know, you know, and have to do that type of thing. But you also want to make sure that you're enforcing things consistently, so that way, you know, you don't have other upset parents wondering why this happened to their, to this other one. But yes, it has been something that we've encountered the past couple of days.
To both principals, if a student has to come, has to communicate with their parent, can they come to the office with your, with your notice, you know, and say, I really need to contact my parent?
In the parent-student handbook, it, it, it states that a teacher can grant permission, or administrator can grant permission for a student to use a, a cellphone. We always encourage, we have a landline in every classroom, we have a landline in, in the nurse's office, administration office, main office. So we do have that. We understand that sometimes parents, if they don't recognize the number, they don't answer the phone. So with permission, a student can pull out their cellphone, make a, make contact with their parents. But as soon as they're done, we tell the student, make sure, okay, phone off and put it away, it's in your backpack, it's off and away for the day. So we do grant that if there's a need.
And I agree, and, and, you know, a lot of those scenarios, like referring back to the cellphone, and obviously we talk about an Apple Watch, which had to be similar in some regards, but, you know, again, hey, the cellphone can do a lot more than an Apple Watch, and if they have a cellphone, they're most likely gonna use their cellphone, right? So I, yeah, I see both sides. I mean, I, I think we should all just sleep on it, think about it, and nothing that's decided at the beginning of the day, but.
I don't have that as an action.
Right, so.
If I may add, we've had a, several infractions last year and already this year with cheating. When a student will pull out a, a device or have a device hidden, or an Apple Watch, long sleeves. We've had an infraction where, because again, we're not looking for it, but then all of a sudden it comes across. We see it as the teacher's moving around the classroom. So we've had infractions like that happen as well.
I mean, to me, so you, you hear this, and, and like I said, it's a fear about your parent, right? And you can look at it anyway. But what concerns me a little bit is that we're saying that each kid has, if a scenario happens, each kid can go get their cellphone, right? But at the same time, we're saying we don't want kids to be looking at their cellphone or their watches to communicate with your mom when they're supposed to be paying attention. So it's kind of, you know, we're saying, in a crisis, they all go get their phones, or they can tell it to look good, right?
Yeah, and that's very different to me than a kid who has an app during the day who's looking at the phone.
No, but I, no, I understand that. So is there a way that, within our protocols, where it's like, whatever app that the teacher is communicating with parents, if my app did something happens, where it's just one message to, like, status if they're sitting in the classroom, you know, and say that they communicate?
Oh, sure.
Like, uh, clash dojo, like, in a crisis, they're, they're trained to say, like, if they're securing the classroom, then a message goes out to that class that, you know, or, I don't know, is that not part of our protocol?
It's more that the protocol's on the school level. So there are different, there are different, um, roles that people have in, in a crisis situation. And on the school level, there's a communication that goes out through a messenger. So it's more, that's more on the school level. So you'll hear communication, um, but this particular.
Not necessarily for the class, it's just at school.
Quite at the school level.
We're here, you have anything to say?
No, I, I agree with what three was saying. I mean, I, you know, for me, when my kids were in fourth grade with Lee, I couldn't sometimes make it to get there early, so I didn't get my boy's cell phones in fourth grade, and my husband thought I was crazy. But it was more for, so I can track them, and I can call them after school to tell them where I'm at. So what I'm trying to say is I understand parents, they want to track after, you know, on the watch, so I think this thing, they want cell phones.
But that's not, you didn't tell them to get it off?
No, no, I did.
So after school, as like Mr. Giedt mentioned, you're leaving school, yeah, you're walking home. That's how I taught them all the work.
All right, good. I get the parents concerned as well.
Okay, well, well done. Okay. Um, so Walden, their work, the engineers, Walden, our new, um, company that we're working with on building these facilities, which by the way, they are concerned that they're not gonna have the full facilities ported during November meeting. I don't think I've shared that with all of you. So we should have a preliminary report for the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting in October, but we probably will expect to see them presenting the full facility plan to you in November. So what they discovered, and I tried very hard here in these pictures to show this to you. So this is the courtyard area, uh, like the oldest part of the building from the back. They consider this the third floor. So what you're looking at here with that circled, right underneath it, this is the teacher's lounge. This is the walkway that connects the gym area over here to the fifth and sixth grade wing and where the main office is at Giles over here. So this middle window right here, which is right here, it looks like, if you didn't know what was happening, it looks like the window is pushing in, but the window is not pushing in, the brick is pushing out. And at this point, it's about a half a brick of distance, so somewhere between one and a half inches to two inches. No one has climbed up there and measured that at this point, but you can see in that point where you look down at the bottom of the window, where it's pretty close to the edge of the brick, and then following that straight up, you can see the cracking there. And then we're about two inches out. Now, this is not structural, structural because there's another layer of brick inside there, right? Um, but this is definitely something that we need to fix right away. So when exactly would right away be? Most likely spring break. Um, this probably will have to be a bidding job. We're expecting this at this point to be over thirty-five thousand on the repair. Uh, this would be life safety funds, um, or we are exploring, since we have some brickwork for Giles and the infrastructure grants, if we'd be able to use that, now, we don't have the answer on yet. But one of those two would be able to work for, uh, the brick there. Um, so I just want to bring this to the board's attention. Again, everyone is safe, the building is safe, the windows are safe, nothing is falling out. But it's something like this that is just, because it happened over time. Over time, what happened was water got in there and the brick just started bubbling away from the structure. And again, there's another layer of brick inside there that keeps the, the windows in place. Um, but that's a repair that would need to happen sooner than later. They don't like doing brickwork, uh, once we get to the cold ones. Um, and quite frankly, we, we wouldn't have time with the bidding process and everything. And they don't feel this really qualifies as an emergency bid, um, or emergency job. It's definitely something we have to put attention to and do quickly, but not in a rush. So this is great, great, not great that we do it, but great that they found it. Then I just have a couple of last things to share with you. Westbrook I A S B, which is your organization, the school board organization, has an Elmer Crest. They have, you should have received an information about this in your email, but registration is still open until the nineteenth. So if anyone would like to attend, we'll register you for it, too, in addition to cover the small cost of it. Their non-press banquet, and they are having the teacher of the year, who is actually from one, one of the lines in high schools. Might be really interesting if you are free that evening and would like to, um, hear from your organization. Along that same lines, the joint conference, which is the I A S B and the I A S A and the I A S B O, um, conference, the twenty-first to the twenty-third of November. This is typically the weekend before Thanksgiving every year downtown. Encloses about five or six different hotels, a very large conference. Um, if any board members are interested in attending this, Mrs. DeWort and I typically attend this conference. But if anyone else would like to join us, please let us know, we'll register you.
Quick question about that. In signing up for that, how committed are you to resources for a full day's class, to try and try and watch a class?
Yeah, it's really up to you. There's always a keynote speaker that's usually very good. We've always enjoyed keynote speakers. There's also, you can build in time there to see the exhibits, to go, they have people from Lee I A S B that answer questions for you. You look at your sessions, pick some sessions to go to. But that's completely, the only thing I would warn you is on Saturday, um, is the parade, and that's right over at the heaven. So if you don't get out of there Saturday by three o'clock, let's see. No, it's in the emails, um, I think it's a Christmas parade, yeah, yeah. If you want to stay down there for the parade, great, hang out for the parade, you're right there. Uh, if you don't want to stay down there, you'll never get across, we should get in. And then I, I believe this is my last slide. Uh, bingo starts on, on Friday, September nineteenth. Doors open at five thirty, sorry, at six thirty. The students from Lee, um, will receive a, uh, popcorn, well, tell me, Dr. Rebioli.
Yeah, a, a classroom that has those participants will receive a popcorn bar.
Thank you. And then the individual students who have someone attending, um, for Giles will receive twenty-five P B I S points. So please come out. Our last bingo, which was in many of last year, was well attended, we're really excited, um, and looking forward to another successful year. And as Dr. Rebioli mentioned, um, earlier, some of the things that were purchased for Lee and were in the works on, um, with the rest of the district, um, were from the bingo proceeds. They've also, NSF has put out a grant process for teachers, grade levels, or schools to fund different projects that go directly to the students. I'll tell you more about that next month. Oh, I'm sorry. Next month, we also need to have an e-learning hearing. So similar to the hearing we had today at the beginning of the meeting, we'll start a meeting, we'll go into a hearing. Uh, the purpose of this, every three years, we have to relook at our e-learning plan. Uh, so this is our year of doing that, we'll do that at the October meeting, it has been the paper. Um, and if any, uh, people have any comments on what our plan looks like, um, and then after that, we just review it until three o'clock. And that's right. Thank you.
Consent agenda, I give a motion to approve fifteen A through fifteen G. Get a motion. Any clear roll call, please?
This is Theodore, this is Lala, this is Ervah Barfield, Mr. Verardi, Mr. Trippuzio.
Yes, motion passes. Action item, consider motion to approve North School District fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
That's him. Lauren, roll call, please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
This is Ervah Barfield, this is Lala, this is Theodore, yes, Mr. Trippuzio.
Yes, motion passes. Any board comments?
Yeah, one, uh, I, I talked about, we talked about last year, I know the sports are going. We have access to potential setup, like, there have a camera set up, and then people can log in to watch the game.
Yeah, it's on the North School District, Diddy, what's that, under Giles' school? If you click on Giles' athletics, it'll take you to the camera.
Okay, so it's all set up?
It's all set up, ready to go, yeah.
Does our in, indoor gym score?
For our indoor, yeah, not outdoor activities.
Completely understood.
Consider motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Can I get a motion? Motion, right, so, any? Call it, please, say aye. I'll vote say aye. We will meet in the conference room at, uh, nine twenty-two. An opening session at ten thirty-one. Move on to personnel action items. Can I get a motion to approve nineteen A through nineteen B?
A motion.
Right, so. Uh, family, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Ervah Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Trippuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. Retirement, can I get a motion to approve nineteen C one, consider acceptance of retirement letter from Andrea Amato at the conclusion of the twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight school year? And nineteen C two, consider acceptance of retirement letter from Denise Muscararo at the conclusion of the twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight school year. Can I get a motion? Yeah, Laura? Roll call, please, oh, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Ervah Barfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trippuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at ten-thirty-three, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'll motion aye, the meeting is now adjourned.